Hello.
Can you hear us online?
Hi there, I can hear you, can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah.
It's live, by the way, just so you know.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I can hear you guys.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, me too.
Call the meeting to order at four oh two. First is the adoption of the agenda, do you have any changes to it?
No. No changes, but I just would like to make a note if the board agrees, if we could do subdivision application, item six point one and, is it item thirty nine, right?
Yeah, no, thirty eight one, five point two.
And, and item five point two, development permit thirty eight first. So we could do development permit thirty eight first and subdivision, sub oh six, six point one first.
Not a problem. So there's no additions to the agenda, I'm looking for the board.
All of the agenda is presented.
Any questions on the motion? Call question on the favor.
Tricia in favor?
Thank you in favor.
Okay, that's passed. Next is the adoption of the minutes for the May twenty first meeting.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the minutes of the, of the May twenty first meeting.
Kim, you have a?
That's presented.
Motion, any questions on the motion? Call question on the favor.
Tricia in favor?
Sorry.
Sorry, that's okay.
Okay, we'll move down to the five point two development permit application, fifteen zero three eight twenty twenty.
One of those, see if they're going to set up here. So, this one, the parcel consists of a twenty nine point two one acre parcel with a legal description of part southeast eleven fifty nine twelve west of the fifth. The application is for a home occupation major, the Bay Upec, for the Lewis Green Acres, Bay Upec, the parcel is zone country residential and is a discretionary use. I've included those definitions for you in this application. It was referred to our economic development department for their comments in which they, they gave a lot of, I'm not going to read this all, but there's a lot of things that align with our economic development and tourism development strategy plan and, and all sorts of things. And then the EDO says that it aligns with the potential to grow income and support one or two seasonal jobs, which could create economic benefit for entrepreneurs in the county, in the region. It is a discretionary use and, and it is required that decision be made by the MPC and it was advertised as a discretionary use and local newspapers and letters were sent to adjacent landowners outlining the proposed development with no concern received to date. It's my recommendation that the municipal planning commission approve development permit fifteen zero three eight twenty twenty five for the home occupation major, Bay Upec, with the following conditions. And would you like me to read those conditions?
I'm good with that.
No, thank you, I brought them.
No. Any questions from the board regarding this? Hello? Would the applicants like to?
I was just going to make a motion.
I have nothing further to say.
Okay, I'll make a motion, I'm sorry, that the MPC approved the development permit fifteen zero three eight dash twenty twenty five for a home occupation major, Bay Upec, with the listed conditions.
Any questions on the motion? You see any other questions?
Tricia in favor?
Tricia in favor?
There you go.
So I will send you a follow-up on the approval and if you have any other questions, feel free to reach out, but they're pretty standard conditions, so.
Okay, sounds great, thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Very simple. We'll move towards the subdivision next. Item six point one.
Yeah, so we're looking at six point one, subdivision application twenty twenty five S U B zero six.
Yeah, thank you. Kim, if you'd like to speak to it, feel free, I'll go through the presentation first. If you have any problems, you can add at the end. So this proposal is for subdivision application to create an approximate seventeen acre parcel from an existing sixty nine point six one acre parcel. The zoning is currently agriculture rural estates and is located in the southwest quarter, twenty four fifty eight twelve west of the fifth meridian. So administration conducted reviews on the consistency with our statutory plans. The proposal is consistent with our land use bylaw. Administration had some concerns about topography on the property, however, the applicant was able to provide a topographical survey that, that demonstrated that there, there is sufficient built sites on the property, so that concern, there's no concerns there. Overall, the, the proposal is consistent with the land use bylaw. Regarding matters related to subdivision and development, there, so, matters and subdivision development regulation part three specifies that every proposed subdivision must provide each lot to be created direct access to a road or lawful means of access satisfactory to the subdivision authority. In addition to the provincial requirements, the approaches being constructed shall meet the requirements of Woodlands County design standards and construction, or sorry, construction guidelines, design standards. An approach will be required to be constructed to the proposed parcel. Infrastructure did provide comment on this application. No issues on the proposed proponent to ensure approach is constructed according to the latest Woodlands County design guidelines and construction standards. Going down to water, water table, soil classification, groundwater availability. Variety of private onsite sewage disposal systems may be used in this case, subject to an onsite verification in accordance with part two, section four, four C of matters related to subdivision development regulations eighty four twenty two and Woodlands County design guidelines. There's an existing septic system on the larger parent parcel that will require septic inspection by a provincially accredited agency. The proposed agriculture real estate parcels over ten acres, therefore soil classification test is not required. Water table and stormwater, water table is not table testing, it's proposed parcel. There's only one parcel being in the parcel, ten acres. Water availability study is not required as the density is not over five parcels on the existing corridor. Joining landowners. I'm just going to read out briefly some of the comments we received. So section six five three of the MGA, section seven, and development matters requires notice to be given to adjacent landowners. No inquiries or letters were received from adjacent landowners and there's no issues received from external agencies. I'll just read briefly some of the comments we did receive from external referral agencies, intergovernmental agencies. So Alberta Environment, Forestry and Parks commented, Alberta Forestry and Parks land delivery has no concerns with the attached application. Echo distribution and transmission, which, echo distribution, echo transmission, wish to confirm we have no objection as we have no pipelines in the proposed area. Fortis Alberta, thank you for contacting Fortis Alberta regarding the above application for subdivision. We have reviewed the plan and determined that no easement is required by, by Fortis. And as part of this subdivision pursuant to section six, six six of the MGA and section seventy two of Woodlands County land use bylaw, municipal reserves will be required in this subdivision as a condition. So recommendation from administration is that the MPC approve this subdivision application with the listed conditions. Would you like me to read those conditions?
No, thank you.
Does the board have any questions on this, Braden?
No, you know, given the report by Josh, I, I would make a motion that we consider approval of subdivision application number two zero two five S sub zero six in consideration of the following reasons.
You have a question on the floor, any questions on the motion?
May we add, and subject to the following conditions?
Okay. About that, Braden? You want to call a question on the favor?
Tricia in favor?
Tricia in favor?
Okay, that's passed. Now we'll go back to.
Five point one.
Applicant zero three two, one point two.
Zero three two, okay, I got this. Pardon me if I sound a little repetitive here with the next two, but this one is for, for hands, if the applicant is in attendance. The applicant is the owner of a five point five four acre parcel with the legal description of plan zero seven two one two six nine, block two lot one, which is part of northeast four fifty nine twelve west of the fifth. The application is for a discretionary use transport contractor business minor and is for the owner to be able to park two trucks and the associated trailer on the subject parcel. It is zone country residential and transport contractor business minor is a discretionary use. It was referred internally to our infrastructure department for comments in which they said if a road use agreement is in place for the duration of the proposed, no issues with them off staging their logging trucks at their property via public road. Should also let the proponents know that the use, the road use agreements are renewed annually. And then I wanted further comment from the road use agreements, so reached out for, for that and if the permit is approved, I would likely, I would kindly ask that the applicant complete a road use agreement and a road use permit when they're hauling out county roads. The permit is located within those following links. The annual road use agreement would be ideal for the applicant of the gravel truck, gravel trucks. It would be log trucks, as it coincides with the permit, the requirement for the agreement is the law, that the log truck company and mailing address, is the log truck and mailing address. It is signed by our infrastructure director and conditions will be as follows and likely be on the road use permit once completed. May haul on dry track only, avoid the use of engine brakes when passing residential properties, dust control and road grading is, is required. If any of that is required, any road damage is the responsibility of the permit holder. And Joshua did reach out, so if you have any further comments on how that works, he would have those answers. And then the application was advertised and sent to adjacent landowners where there were numerous letters of opposition received to date. And the proposed development for the transport contractor business minor is a discretionary use pursuant to section twenty one, one E is being referred to by myself, to the municipal planning commission without recommendation. And I have provided the list of conditions if you decide to approve and some reasons if you decide to refuse. The letters are of concern or attached, if you haven't read them yet, but they were all attached for, for you guys prior.
Does the board have any questions?
I think this is.
Tricia here, I had, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, Peter.
Yeah, I just, this is a very similar one to the, and the application we had before, you know, pretty much those letters were, they're consistent with the same one that we actually went, kind of, tour on, so I'm really not, I really don't have a problem with the way this was developed at all.
I do believe that, well, the applicant is here, do you have any questions? And the person opposed is here as well, I believe, or one of the individuals, at least.
Does the applicant wish to speak?
Do you have anything you want to say? Do you have any questions for him? I couldn't.
You're just hauling empty, empty trailers back to your yard?
It'll be an empty truck coming in in the morning, or in the, in the evening and leaving in the morning for work. And it's not like it's coming in like three, four times a day, it's just leaving in the morning, coming back in the evening. In the winter, it can go at any time, nighttime, it leaves, and then it's five days a week, just during weekdays and on the weekend, the truck stays home. And it's just empty, no loads, no nothing.
I'm not familiar with that road, is it oiled or is it gravel?
It's gravel.
Tricia?
Hey, I did have a few questions, actually, so, and kind of also to echo what Peter had mentioned. The place that we had looked at previously, they did have an existing garage and the way that the property was laid out, I think was a little bit differently than this one. So, so some, a few concerns that I have are, one, if we approve it with the conditions and essentially the way it is and the, with the homeowner's intent of building a garage in the future, then if he invests in the property, builds the garage and then his permit gets revoked, then my concern is, is that he's made that investment. And also another question or concern that I would have is, again, same thing with selling the property down the road, so if he has this as a permitted use, invests in that additional structure and the permit gets pulled, then it could also be that concern of devaluing his property from the sale perspective. So I'm just a little bit curious as well and would ask Peter or Josh, when it comes to building the additional structure, is that a discretionary use for one that size? Or like, would that come back again or is that a permitted use?
Sorry, can you say that again? Because there is no shop or structure included in this application. I don't, I believe that the applicant wanted to have this approved first.
Absolutely. Just where I'm going with it, what my concern is, is that if we approve it and he starts building, he gets a permit, he starts building his shop and then one year from now it's denied a permit. So, because there's a couple of things here, is that the way these conditions read is definitely, like, he would be responsible for the maintenance on the road and he would also be at risk of having the permit pulled. So that's kind of just where I'm going with it. I was trying to get a clearer understanding, could he go ahead, build this shop, put the investment in and then have his permit revoked and then he's put that considerable investment into his property and wouldn't be able to even potentially resell it?
Well, the, the structure in and of itself is a permitted use and can't be refused if he meets the setbacks, so.
Oh, no.
That would be an additional permit that would have to be applied for and approved. This is only regarding the, the transport contractor business and there are mechanisms with this permit where if it is a nuisance or, or not following these conditions, that the development authority can revoke or cancel the permit. I'm not entirely sure if that answers your question.
It basically does. So basically, my, just my concern to the property owner is that if it was me, for example, maybe if this is approved, then I would consider waiting a year to build my shop just in case that the permit gets revoked, I guess. So, because that would be my concern, is just protecting them and their investment.
Well, and also, the shop could also help alleviate some of the concerns, I also think, with, in terms of noise.
Which is, which is fair, okay, good point.
Okay, does the, would you like to speak against?
I live up there and I am neighbor of one of you, I don't know which one. We are also trying to sell our house right now. Well, that pretty much almost devalues our house. Nobody's going to want to move in beside a logging truck that comes home daily. Okay? Since we just put it back on the market again, since they're already starting to hear there's a logging truck coming in, more than one logging truck, we're not going to be able to sell that house. Not at all. Unless another logging truck comes in. My other two neighbors feel the same. And road conditions is one thing we are all concerned about. After we get a storm, a rainfall, like what we're getting right now, those roads are muddy. You get logging trucks in, it's not going to be nice and we'll all start getting stuck. We have cars, we have trucks, we have trailers. Trailer that hauls a side by side. Or in a closed trailer that might have furniture in it. We are all, all don't want that. Our road gets graded lately, once in a while, because it's been a really good road also. And in the winter, the gentleman takes care of it very well. And in the winter, it's just going to be just as bad. And then when ice develops on our road, and it does, and it lasts for a week or two, these semis aren't going to make it either. They're going to end up falling off the road and just wrecking land, either on our side or on the other person's side that we bought the land from. So that's not going to be good. The noise and the pollution disturbance, that's one thing we were all concerned about, is hearing them at night. We do not have kids, okay? There isn't, there is one that does have children and it's her grandchildren. Chances are she might hear these trucks coming in at night. If they are done at five o'clock, then it won't be so bad. But what time do you leave in the morning?
At any time.
At any time, so.
Semi, three, four in the morning, five, seven in the morning.
That is another concern. We understand, and I understand myself, you do not just start a truck and go, you've got to let it warm up. So you let that truck warm up for half an hour, an hour, or some winter nights, you'll let it run all night. We'll all hear it. That also disturbs our sleep. My husband doesn't sleep well at his age. And he'll be hearing that all night. And the one inside us is going to have the two trucks. So you'll have both trucks going in one time, in the middle of the night in the winter. And that's not good for anybody. If somebody does ever buy my house after you're in there and they have kids, those kids will wake up too. They're not, they're not quiet and I know that. I used to work as pilot, so I know. Now, traffic and safety, we were concerned about, the noise pollution, yes. The negative impact on the property value that drops our price, because nobody's going to want to live there. If we want to sell, we're not going to be able to, we're going to be stuck there. And the environmental and aesthetic impact, the wear and tear on the roads, surrounding land caused by heavy trucks, combined with the unsightly view of commercial vehicles in a residential neighborhood. Those are pretty much all our concerns. And like I said, I'm not the only one, all three of us feel the same, we sent letters in, all three of us. This is one of my letters right here that I sent him. To Peter. That's me. Oh, that's you? Okay.
Hey.
Hi. Now, I understand with the applicant, you're running a truck, you're based off of road bands and when you can operate and when you can go, so I, I do get that. Now, my, my thing, when, we've had these come up before and a couple of things where it's always, you know, the perceived noise is going to be too much or the look at the truck or the, you know, property value. Every time we've had one of these come up where it's been talked about, my property value is going to go down, like, you know, it's going to devalue this, it's not going to be good for the neighborhood. Anytime we've gone digging and we've looked at it through, through administration, talked with the real estate agents, anything on that, there, there is no proof that actually validates that. It, it's from, every time that we've done this, everybody's said that, but again, stats wise, number wise, when it comes to resale values, there's no stats that actually prove that. Unfortunately, from us, when we look at it, we hear that, but there's nothing to actually back that up. The last couple that we had where people were also talking about the concern of the noise of their truck, we, we went out to one, they were concerned again about the noise of the, and two things to be aware. Firstly, if we don't pass this with the applicant and say he can't park his truck on his property, we can't, if he has permit or whatever, we can't prohibit him from actually driving up and down the road still. He could, he could drive it, he couldn't park it on his property, he could park it in front of the property, he could still drive it down the road. Last one where we had, we actually took a drive out to the applicant's property because there was concern about noise and I followed behind the log truck in my old Dodge diesel that I have, an old log truck of mine, and my truck was louder than the log truck.
An old diesel, I can understand that, I know them too.
But the concern for the residents was, again, the noise of the guy's log truck coming home and everybody's sitting there waiting, oh my God, this truck is so loud, listen to this coming, and then he drove by and like, it's still here coming, it was my truck. And mine's, it's just an old diesel, it's not piped, it's not anything, but it's still a loud running truck as it is. And if this was a pickup truck coming in, it could be louder than that, you know, than what we would hear from a log truck and from the municipal side, there's nothing we could do about it from it being a pickup truck.
Yeah, we've heard a loud pickup truck.
There are a lot of log trucks. And that's just, so, so for us, looking at it from, from this point, I don't know how loud his truck is, I don't know if he's got a six inch, eight inch stacks, anything like that, but just, just from where I am. And the next thing, just one more point I just want to say here. For, for me, and I understand some people, you know, you see a piece of equipment or a piece of machinery sitting next to a house, they don't want to see that. On the other hand, there's other people, I, I have younger kids, if we drive for us a race and there's a Kenworth or a Peterbilt or there's something sitting in the yard, they, they want me to stop because they want to look at it, they like seeing that. So it's, you know, we, we have emotions and feelings on one side and we have the other side, you know, from what he wants to do. But obviously, my, my biggest concern is going to be the infrastructure, if the roads can support it, because for the residents out there, that's what we take care of, that's what we maintain and just making sure, obviously, I know we have a lot of gravel roads with some soft spots that weren't properly put in or what.
We have soft spots.
They work well with smaller vehicles and the heavier ones don't really support it. And in the past, there's been decisions made where we've allowed stuff. And in the past, there's been decisions made where we've allowed stuff in, uh, the heavier traffic, whether it's RVs, motorhomes, or even some of the people bringing, uh, campers in and out. You know, just the heavier loads on the road have deteriorated the road. So from administration, at least from us, if, if we can ensure that the road portion is gonna be okay, then that's, that's where I am on it for the, the resident.
Yeah, 'cause the road in the winter, 'cause we all see our grader when we've got that much snow. He doesn't come in daily or anything like that, he comes in and he plows, because there was only three of us in there at the time. Actually, two of us, really.
And I, I guess the concern about if icy roads or wherever the truck sliding. I, I've got a class one, I drove trucks for years too, and I found that on the icier roads, a heavier truck, drive, again, all your drive axes in the back, but they get more traction on those than a pickup truck in four-wheel drive climbing a hill. So I, I would, I would be more concerned about a pickup truck sliding in the ditch than a, uh, and I, I did lots of oilfield roads up and down hills.
No, we haven't seen a pickup truck going. We saw a bus going once.
Yeah.
A school bus.
But I, I'd see, I'd...
That went in once.
I, I honestly, for, for, for me, from my experience, what I've seen, I, I would see a truck in a ditch more than a, than a tractor-trailer.
Yeah, so this is my concerns for all the neighbors.
Patricia.
And myself.
Who's?
Patricia.
Patricia.
Oh, and another, uh, comment I just wanted to add here. In looking at the, the photos were attached that have not yet been uploaded to this property. Uh, specifically for this property, it appears, based on the photographs, that it's fairly private. So when somebody had mentioned about the aesthetics of the truck being parked there, I would imagine it looks like it's barely visible from the road.
Actually, that, there is one house that he just brought in his modular. And, uh, I can't see him from where I am at all. I just know he's there. But the other one that I'm concerned about is my neighbor. He's gonna be right beside me, and he's bringing in the two trucks. Every day.
Fran, you had a...
Yeah, or you were saying about the noise, and that, uh, just wanted to add that my truck is equipped with, uh, emissions. Yeah, there's no, it's not gonna be, um, diesel fumes all, all over the place, even if it's running, it has emissions. And the next thing is, if I'll be leaving in my pickup truck to work, that's noisier than my camper is. So my older diesel is noisier.
Which lot do you have?
I'm the one on the modular.
Okay, so you have the lot beside me?
Hmm.
Then only one truck will be coming home, and the second one will be coming home on the weekend.
So you can do all the mechanics?
Yeah.
And your truck, it's, it's the newer style engine, you can't hear the jake on it?
Oh, no, you couldn't tell if it's, if the jakes are on or not. It's, uh, 2020, it is equipped with all the emissions, it is, uh, right the way the government expects those things.
And, oh, sorry, go ahead.
And, and just, uh, I guess a question I have, and I know this, for the one applicant, we have the next applicant coming up here. But, uh, with, with administration, there, there is recommendations from some of the, uh, the residents, you know, possibly do this on a one-year term to just kinda gauge where the community is, and I guess the impact on the community. Would that be, you know, something the applicants would possibly have an appetite for? You know, you know, trial it and just, just see what the, you know, and especially from us on the administrative side, we can see what the impact on the roads is, we can see how, how it runs, and we can see what the, uh, you know, i- if it's as detrimental to the community as the residents out there feel it is, or if it's a lot of heightened emotions or, you know, something coming in. And, and maybe it's, it's not as bad as people think it's gonna be.
Patricia. Patricia.
Oh, just to jump in, I would definitely, uh, kind of echo where Dave was going with that as well. And also just wanted to clarify and point out that in this case, this property owner already owns the property, and in the one that we're gonna be discussing next, they are only looking to purchase the property. Is that correct?
Sorry, Patricia, could you repeat that, that ending there?
Uh, just wanted to clarify, this property, this property owner already owns this said piece of property. Our next application, the person does not yet own the property, they're just looking to purchase it.
I, I believe in both ca- both cases, they, uh, they own.
They hadn't owned it when they applied, but I do believe they own now. But, well, that's for a different application.
Yeah, if, if we could keep the, uh...
Yeah, fair enough, perfect.
Next application.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
And may I make a, a comment, Dave, just regarding, um, the, the suggestion you had made? So there is a condition in here that they'll need to get a road use agreement, and the agreement, they're renewed annually. So if there's any issues, if there's any issues with the roads, or the provisions of that agreement cannot be met within the year, well, then it, they wouldn't give the applicant another, uh, agreement. And that, by default, would, would make them in contravention to the permit, so they couldn't hold the permit. If they can't meet the conditions of the permit, the permit could be revoked in that case. So there is provision there, if there's major issues that arise, for example, road maintenance is required, the applicant can't maintain the road the way the county requires it, then they're not complying with the agreement, the agreement wouldn't be renewed. Um, there's provisions in there too for security and all that. Um, and then the permit could be revoked in that case.
So for, in, he's saying the, the development permit wouldn't be the one to do the year, year valid validity, it would be through the road use agreement, where all security and protections of the road would be kept?
And, and also, it's the county's responsibility to keep the road up?
Through the road use agreement, it would, all the, any additional work required would fall onto the, uh, into the agreement.
To a certain standard, it's the county's responsibility.
Yeah.
And if, if I could ask, uh, that when we approved last summer, have you received any more complaints about it or anything?
There have been zero complaints after any approvals, except for the one. Uh, there was one complaint on it, and that has been dealt with, and haven't had any res, uh, any complaints since. And I did some tracking, and there are twenty-seven approved transport contractor businesses minor within the county.
So just, to Fran, to, to make sure that you can bring your log truck home, you have to abide by this. So if you don't abide by it, in a year, there's a good possibility you can't bring your truck home. So, it's up to you. Any more questions?
Well, and, and again, just, we'll, we'll say to the, to the permit for bringing the truck home, not, not the land, land use portion, but say that, uh, against, uh, the nuisance or whatever for the, the residence, the noise or whatever becomes humid, like, wh- what would be the residents recourse in if, say, you're down the road, they, they just can't do this? Like, like, say it turns out to be too volatile, too, too much fast.
So the noise concerns would be addressed through our community standards by law. Um, there's nothing within our land use by law that will address that. Uh, so that's why it's not necessarily a condition of this permit. Um, however, fines and et cetera, meter, measures can be used within the community standards by law. And then there is that condition within here where if it is, um, excessive noise, it's condition number eight? Yeah, where we can, um, shall not be an interference. Yeah, in the opinion of the development authority, be a source of inconvenience. So on a case-by-case basis, we will take any complaints in, and investigate, and then enforce, as in any other application. With the help of CPO, the, the community standards by law can be enforced as well. Does that answer that question? Sorry, I was...
Any more questions?
Uh, just, I think we've heard everything. I was going to, uh, make a motion that the municipal planning committee approved development permit one-five-dash-zero-three-two-dash-two-zero-two-five, uh, with the conditions one through thirteen.
Any questions on the motion? Call the question, all in favor?
Patricia in favor?
Tracy in favor?
How does it pass? Thank you. Next is, uh, Chris.
Okay. I sound a little repetitive here, but, um, okay, the, the applicant, it says, is looking to purchase, but I believe now owns, correct?
We don't possess it.
Yep, uh, five-point-seven-eight acre parcel with the legal description of plan zero-seven-two-one-two-six-nine, block one, lot two, which is part of northeast four fifty-nine twelve, west of the fifth. Uh, the application is for the owner to be able to park two trucks and the associated trailers on the parcel. Um, as, again, it is a discretionary use, and the same comments were received for both, um, by our infrastructure department. Uh, it was advertised, and letters were sent to adjacent landlords outlining the little development, where, again, numerous letters of opposition were received to date. And again, I am, you, you have pursuant to section twenty-one E, I'm referring to the NPC without a recommended action, and it provided, uh, reasons to approve and/or refuse development permit application fifteen-zero-three-nine-two-zero-two-five.
Any questions from the board on this application?
Or just, uh, one, and to the, uh, applicant there, to just for clarification, you're saying be one truck throughout the week, and then second one on the weekend is your maintenance?
That's right, yeah.
And I, I know the other gentleman there, what, uh, what type of hours are you, like, is it, can be multiple times in and out of the truck, or again, leave in the morning, come back at night?
Leave in the morning, come back at night, yeah.
And I'm assuming your, uh, schedule is also dependent on road bans and kinda workforce up in that end too?
Uh, I myself, usually I'm just running through the day.
Right.
Come, when the road bans come on, that's where I switch to nights. But usually I'm day shift.
And, uh, what, what time would you come and go on?
So I, I would leave anywhere from four, three to four, and then come back later in the evening, probably seven or eight in the evening. That could vary as the weather changes.
Go ahead.
I have one more thing. Um, we have been hearing all the gravel trucks that have been coming in, or dirt trucks that have been coming in daily. They were developing one of the house, one of the acres. We were hearing those things every day when they come in. We hear them when they go down the paved road. We hear everything.
Last question to the applicant.
My season ends at March, and then I start back up around, I mean, around end of May usually. So I got two, two months off where the truck just sits out.
Can I ask you a question, sir?
Yep.
Are your trucks, the exhaust systems altered on them, or are they standard?
Uh, the one is altered and the one is standard.
Which one comes home every day?
Uh, the altered one.
What does altered mean?
Uh, it's, it doesn't have the emission. And she mentioned earlier it'll be running for an hour or half hour. That's not true, I got, uh, pro heaters on them. So I air them up and I take off. So they're always warm when I go to work.
Any more questions?
Uh, Patricia here. Okay.
Go ahead, Patricia.
Okay, actually, what I was curious about is, for example, if we approve this, and now the main part of the road coming in, we're putting it on the conditions for the truck to repair the road, how are we gonna differentiate then which property owner caused the damage? So how can we hold multiple, uh, property owners accountable for truck damage on the road?
So the, the road use agreements, uh, there, if we can prove, the county can prove who did it, of course, that's the role we take. Uh, otherwise, we, it's normally based off of a complaint basis. So if someone sees the truck, uh, we can enforce it that way. So if the neighbors see a particular truck that's causing issues, report that to the county, we can, uh, enforce it. We can then figure out who, uh, who in fact is causing the damage. And in this case, there will only be two people with road use agreements, uh, in that subdivision. So, uh, we know it's one or the other, um, but...
Or both.
Or both.
In which case it would be split.
But to prove it, it's very, very difficult unless we get a complaint.
Exactly, and that's exactly my concern. It's one thing to approve one, but once we approve the other, it essentially makes it that, uh, we have, we would have a difficult time enforcing the repair on the road.
Could it be split fifty-fifty either ways?
I assume that the portion of the road that's shared, 'cause obviously they would go in through different points, would be split fifty-fifty on the repairs. That's what I would assume infrastructure's route would be. But I can't speak for that entirely.
And wasn't it said that one, uh, one place is gonna have two trucks, and the other one's only gonna have one?
They're both gonna have two.
The, so there's, there's respective rates in those agreements. They're based, like, they can, they can make amounts based off of trucks if there's damage. Uh, each agreement's gonna be slightly different based off the proposed use, uh, proposed use and how, how often they're going in and out. So if damage were to occur, there'd be provisions in there on who, who would be paying for what in the amounts based off of the usage. They would have to enter to an agreement with the infrastructure department. They'd have to list their usage, their hours, when they're using it. Um, if, uh, and then they would also need to speak to the season. I know that might not answer your question, but all that will be included in the, uh, in the agreement.
Okay, just I'm trying to determine from sort of manpower and a financial standpoint for administration, if although this may be put in the conditions, how can we enforce it? So, okay, thank you.
Peter.
Yeah, I, I used to be in the trucking business, so one of the realities is that an empty truck actually puts less ground pressure on the road than, uh, a loaded one ton that has garbage going to the dump from, you know, from somebody's place. Um, I think that there's a stark difference between loaded and unloaded. And, and to be perfectly honest with you, I think that, that ten truck, when trailer-driven responsibly on the road, does less damage than ten vehicles that go up and down that road. So I think that the road use agreements, um, are gonna be a very difficult one to, to assess. And, but I honestly believe that it's not the transport unit that goes in, out, in, out one day, once a day, that's actually going to do the damage there. And I think our municipality has done a good job in assessing, um, you know, road conditions and trying to maintain them, and I think that's gonna improve in the future. So, you know, really, um, the noise issue can be addressed, um, through bylaw. So it's, it's really difficult for us to, to approve one and not the other. You know, with the, with these conditions, I think we've covered our bases, so...
So, any more questions? Can I add a motion on this? Go ahead, Sue.
I would be prepared to make a motion that the municipal planning commission approve development permit application one-five-dash-zero-three-nine-dash-two-zero-two-five with the conditions.
We have a motion on the floor, any questions on the motion? No, I'll call the question, all in favor?
Patricia in favor?
Tracy in favor?
That is passed. Next is information items. Anybody want the information items read?
Oh, come on!
I'll move the, uh, information...
I'll move the information items as presented.
Any questions on that? Call the question, all in favor?
Patricia in favor? Tracy in favor?
Passed. Next meeting to be determined?
We do have a subdivision application, but, so it'll likely be the mid-July. I would think, July sixteenth. We'll see, maybe July.
To be determined.
Maybe, we're gonna do, we'll let you know as soon as we know. We haven't talked about it.
To be determined.
One left.
Last I heard, you were waiting for some information.
Make a motion, we're here.
All right, four forty-nine.
So who made that motion to the judge?
Dave.
In favor?